I'd like to call to order the work session on the 3rd of December. Hard to believe we're already in December. We are all present this evening, so we have one agenda for discussion. So staff will present the results of the 2018 Employee Engagement Satisfaction Survey. I believe Julie, our city manager, has something to present first. Julie, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The City of Goodyear has been conducting employee surveys since 2014. And so this will be the third in a series of doing every other year surveys. And so we've been doing 2014, 2016, and now 2018. So it's nice to have a comparison, not only comparing Goodyear to Goodyear over those six years, but also the company we utilize allows us to also compare to certain national benchmarks with other clients that they use. So the reason why we do employee surveys is the opportunity to hear from employees directly, you know, and it was important to us that it's anonymous. And so this year, going into our employee survey, we removed all demographic questions except for what department they work in. And I'm very pleased to report that my focus was on participation, and we had over 90% of our employees participate in this year's employee survey. So with that, we do have our representative from the company who conducted the survey, and then Lyman, Human Resources Director, will be talking about next steps. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harnald. Mayor Lorden, members of council, my name is Tom Miller. I'm president of National Research Center. I'm very pleased to be here to talk about the results of your employee survey. I do want to say that it's not typical for local governments to discuss employee surveys in a work session. So just to right off the bat, I want to congratulate you for the transparency. I think it's very salutary for the organization and the community and staff to have council be involved and to have it be open to the public. National Research Center is an independent organization. We bring to this enterprise the unbiasedness of an independent organization. At the same time, we don't know the internal ins and outs of what's happening in Goodyear the way all of you and staff do, so we would not presume to tell you this is how you deal with these results. But we are here to tell you what the results say, and I'm happy to have you all ask questions or make comments as I go. I don't need to wait till the end if you don't. We're just going to go over this at a very high level. There's hundreds of data points that you've probably all memorized, but we don't have to go into each data point, just the overall meaning. And I think you'll find it useful, and I hope as we discuss this, you'll be thinking about what will staff do with these results? Because I believe when I'm done, that's where Mr. Lockett will come in and give some perspective about that. So just to give you some update on the background, we know that when we do these surveys, what we're reporting on isn't just about the health of your organization, but because we're looking at how the organization's working, we're getting some sense of the kinds of services that are being delivered to your residents. A healthy organization is going to be able to deliver better services and sustainably better. I am listening to myself practically twice. Is that the way it's supposed to go here? Isn't it hard enough to listen to me once?
Are you getting an echo?
Yeah, we are echoing.
We are too. Can we...
Is that okay?
Is that the way it's going to be?
I can do it. I'm just thinking about you.
If you get it the first time, we'll get it the second.
That helps with me.
But then you have to hear it twice.
It's not supposed to echo.
I wasn't sure.
But you sound good. Don't worry.
Okay. We've been doing this national employee survey around the country. We do it just for local governments, and the benchmarks that we have against which we can compare Goodyear staff results are benchmarks for local governments across the country, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. The survey measures 10 dimensions of employee perspectives about their employment, and the survey was collected, the data were collected at the beginning through the middle towards the third week of October of this year. They were collected on the web, and I can tell you a little bit more about those methods. The whole idea with this third iteration is to help you track performance over a period of time, so you can see how things are moving. Are they moving up or down? And to identify where things might be better attended to. We not only sent out postcards to all the employees, those for whom we had email addresses, we sent email invitations as well. So this was primarily completed on the web. Even though they got the postcard, they were asked to go to a web URL and fill this out. The idea for us is that if you have the high-performing employees, you'll have high-performing service delivery. These are the 10 topics that I mentioned that we are measuring here, and these represent about 133 questions into which these categories are put. We have benchmark comparisons, and here you can see there were approximately 22,000 other local government employees that have taken this kind of survey, answered pretty much these very questions, and we'll be able to compare the results here to these others. Some of the others, for example, would be just Palo Alto, Livermore, Scottsdale, Dublin, Ohio, Decatur, Georgia, East Providence, Rhode Island. They're across the country, and we feel that they give a good representation of what local government employees are thinking about their organization. We also took a look at those changes that Julie mentioned in the introduction, going from 2014 to 2016 to 2018. So here you can see, when we compare the results from 2016 to 2018, where there were changes, and in 100, so cases there that changes did not occur, they improved. So these are perspectives of your employees. I guess I want to say that what happens when the news is so great in local governments, I think the biggest challenge is to avoid complacency. And I'm not, having ever been here, this is not an accusation to anybody at the table. It's just something that I think naturally happens when folks see that they're doing so well. And I say this because even though you could be doing better than other places, and even though the changes from one iteration to another iteration are improvements, the fact is that not every one of these items that describe how the organization is working is at 100% of the folks saying, "I strongly agree," or "This is excellent." So when you take a look at the actual percentages of folks who give positive ratings, they vary across the board, not only from question to question, but from department to department. So there are many opportunities here, even though you can see here, and as we go through these results, you'll have it reconfirmed, that there are very positive findings and very positive perspectives about not only the organization here in Goodyear, but about how city government itself is working from the perspective of the employees. I'll give you a quick example. We're going to get to this later, too. Here's a case of a question that asks, "How is the organization dealing with low-performing employees?" This is a question we ask all over the country. It's a question whose answer tends not to garner a large percentage of folks giving a positive response. And even here, you had less than 50% of the employees saying this was excellent or good. I say that even though here, this has improved over the years, and you're above the benchmark. So there are other places, and that's not untypical. And that's the value of benchmarks, frankly. You're able to see for certain kinds of activities, this is how it is across the country. Certain kinds of questions just don't garner very positive responses. So I bring that up so that we don't just throw up our hands and say, "This is great," and walk away without thinking about, "Is there something to do to improve or to sustain?" So one of the things we do to give some sense of where to focus attention is we do something that looks at those drivers of employee satisfaction. And there are indexes that we make, there are statistical indices. That's not important. What's important is they fall into these categories that I'd mentioned before, and what we did was look at the extent to which each one of these set of responses correlates most highly with employee satisfaction with working here in Goodyear. And those stars indicate the places, the categorization of things, that correlate most highly with job satisfaction. So that's respect and ethics, employee-supervisor relationships, and the employee's contribution and fit. And among all of those, they're all above comparison locations, except for employee contribution and fit, which is about the same as what we see elsewhere. So that kind of information, and when we talk about employee contribution and fit, we're talking about things like, "I have values that match the organization's values." There's a good work-life balance here. There's good clarity of roles. Those are the kinds of questions that go into contribution and fit, and even, and being similar to the benchmark, that was one of the lower ratings. So let's take a look at the first key finding, which is that there's very strong job satisfaction here, and that morale is very high. We take a look at the one question where we're asking about job satisfaction, we can see that almost 90% of your employees are saying that they strongly agree or agree that they're satisfied with their job. And that, even there, the percentage of your employees who strongly agree has improved since 2016, when we did this last. And it's been strong since 2014, so this is highly sustained and very positive. And curiously, this is about the same as we see in other places. So what about the aspects of job satisfaction? Here are four of them. One of them is above the benchmark, in that the city is a good employer. The others have sustained at these very high levels since we began doing this in 2014 and certainly since 2016. When we look at some other trends about what's gotten better, I just want to give you a couple of examples. The connection between compensation and performance has gone up since 2014. Compensation compared with similar opportunities has gone up. Overall benefits, availability of resources and equipment, providing individual and workgroup spaces and their others. Overall staff morale has also gone up, and it's higher than we see in other places. And just to reaffirm again about the issue of complacency, another side of this coin is we do nothing to sugarcoat these results. So these results are the results, and they're as strong as they appear. Confidence and leadership is also strong, both the workplace and city government. And you can see some examples of that here. At least seven in 10 employees reported that the atmosphere of mutual trust and confidence was excellent or good. Employees were treated with respect. Their involvement in decision-making was strong, as well as promoting positive work relationships. All of these were above comparison areas, and they've, and some of them have gotten better. In fact, all three out of these four, except treating employees with respect, which was high before, remained high, and the others actually improved since the last time we did this. More on confidence and leadership, not only when you include supervisors as well, you have three in four folks saying that they agree that city leadership is strong, this sense of shared understanding among employees of what the organization is supposed to do is among these high ratings. When we asked about supervisors, eight in 10 said that the supervisors treated them with respect, that they promoted a positive work environment and relationship, trust and confidence, they welcomed involvement. And these kinds of high scores and improvement over time sustained for supervisors as well as the executive leadership. We also, curiously, this is not something that a lot of employee surveys do, and that is we asked the employees what they thought about the city itself. And the reason we do this is even though it's not asking about the organization that they work in and the organization's process, we're asking about the community they do the work for. And in some instances, the perspective of staff is different than the perspective of residents. And sometimes staff have an inflated view of what they think their performance is, and sometimes they have a less-than-positive view of what the community is they work for. It's not always glowing and positive. In this case, we can see that they're very positive ratings for these aspects of government quality, and all of them have gone up since 2016. All of them are above our benchmark comparisons, including overall confidence in Goodyear city government. And that really can't be taken for granted. I can tell you from experience, it's not always like that. So just to emphasize again, the places where there could be opportunities to improve, here's a slide that gives you some examples of lower ratings, even though these ratings are not low compared to other places. They're low on an absolute sense, on a scale that goes from zero to 100, where zero is strongly disagree or poor, and 100 is strongly agree or excellent. So you have a lower percentage of employees giving the more positive ratings to things like dealing with low-performing employees, which I mentioned earlier. And then there are these other examples shown here, also opportunities to develop a career path. I was just looking through and seeing those ratings that were below 60%, say. And we even talked about overall staff morale. It's gone up. It's higher than we see in other places. It's 63% excellent or good. So there are always opportunities to improve, and even though in Goodyear, you have very, very strong positive results. So if you take a look here, this is just a recap of what we just talked about, the overall satisfaction of employees, their confidence in leadership, both at the executive level and the supervisory level. And sustainability of this seems to be very strong so far. In fact, things moving in the positive direction, not even staying stable. If you take a look at the number of changes, they're all positive, those where there are changes. And then finally, I want to say again that this is an opportunity to compare results across departments, because there's another report that does that. Not all departments gave the same rating that you see for the organization as a whole, so that, again, offers an opportunity to work with various staff members to make improvements where staff feels that needs to be made, where council does, and where the executive team does. That's my summary, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Council comments?
And I'm going to talk next steps if...
Please, go ahead.
I'm going to talk very quickly about next steps.
Take your time. We have time.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Very quickly, just move to next steps, and I'll start, if I can have the Elmo. I just wanted to talk about where we've been. And just to start on the next steps conversation, our next steps will start with an action planning process.
Excuse me, Lyman, that's fuzzy, or my eyeballs aren't working.
Your eyeballs are working. Rebecca to the rescue.
Oh, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Takes an engineer.
Yes, it does. Thank God for engineers, right?
Oh, my gosh.
So our next steps will start with an action planning process. We've gone through this process for the last two cycles, 2014 and 2016. That process started with developing focus areas at the leadership team level, and then the leadership team took those survey results down to the department level. On a global basis, we established these areas as our focus areas in recognition, communications. He talked about dealing with low performers, career path development. And then in 2016, we looked at benefits overall and materials, and that was data that came from the survey that said, "We have an opportunity here," and that's how we established those focus areas. Some of the actions that we took, and I'll just hit on a few of these key points. In 2014, we launched Notes to Know, and Notes to Know is our primary vehicle for communicating with employees. That was a nice step in our minds to improve that. We also implemented the shout-out awards as it related to recognition. We totally revamped our tuition assistance program, including, I believe, the cycle before last, we came back to council to raise that back to our maximum amount of tuition assistance to the level that it used to be at. We also changed it from a tuition reimbursement program to a tuition assistance program so that employees can get their money upfront and then provide their grades to substantiate. So a number of changes there to enhance that program. From a benefits perspective, we rolled out our new benefits guide. So we took a step back and kind of went old-school and actually went back to a printed document where employees could fill and touch their benefits. There are some benefits that they never may use, but they want to have as a safety net. For example, short-term disability. They have short-term disability. Most employees will never use that. They will never understand the value of that unless they use it. But knowing they have it creates that value. So we've tried to do some things there to enhance the value of our benefits. And then last year, we also added some new benefits. So these are things that the survey results led us to look into with regard to low-performing employees. We actually shifted our focus with lean and continuous improvement to really look at employee engagement. How do we engage our employees in a different way in the work that they're doing? So what we're doing with continuous improvement and lean largely focuses on that area. And just a quick look at the results. So these are the focus areas, and these are the specific questions here in the survey that related to those focus areas. And you can see our results over the years from 2014, where we started with our first survey, our benchmark survey, and then what the scores were in 2016, and then this year in 2018. And we've improved those each of the years, so we're proud of that. But we set a long-range goal of 75% for the top four areas, and we have not reached that yet. So although we're pleased with the overall data within the survey, we know we have further improvement that we can make. So we'll be going back through this process to identify either new focus areas or to continue to move forward with the focus areas that we currently have. And what that looks like in our next steps is here, we've got the survey, and we'll begin to do some analysis, and we'll also begin to dig a little bit deeper into the survey by going out to the employees, bringing them in and gathering additional information. For example, when they're talking about, morale is a great one. We're at 63%. We're above the benchmark. We're not pleased with that. We need to understand from employees, what does it take to get to a 75 or an 80 in a category like that? What are we missing as an organization? We can delve into many areas that the employees are telling us that we may not fully understand from the survey, and those will be done through employee open houses, where we'll invite employees to come in, we'll engage them in some interactive, fun processes to gather that additional data. Then we'll move to the action planning development phase, where we'll take it to leadership, and we'll have some strategy sessions on what focus areas we want to move forward with. And leadership will, again, take those, they're actually already doing it. I've gotten more phone calls about what they want to do going forward. They've got data in front of them, and they're already beginning to react to it. But we'll sit down, and we'll have plans at the department level for every department for the things that are specific to each individual department. And then that will move into the process of just continuing to update until the next cycle. So in the last cycle, quarterly, we reviewed this at leadership team meetings to understand what kind of progress is being made, what's happening, what's effective, what are best practices. We also are doing retention interviews or stay interviews with our employees so that we can gauge, are we getting better? Are we getting worse? Where do we still have opportunities along the way until our next survey? And then lastly, the DCMs introduced a coffee and culture, where they're actually meeting with employees, and they're also getting feedback at that level, so that we're getting feedback in multiple ways to understand how we're doing. So that's a overview of next steps. We are excited to move forward. We know that we have opportunities someplace. I think we put our continuous improvement hat on. We're looking beyond the benchmarks at this point, because the benchmarks really aren't our goal. We're looking beyond, so. With that, Mayor.
Thank you. Comments from council? Sherry?
Thank you very much for a very complete report, and thank you, Lyman, for kind of just getting those next steps forward. I guess for me, one thing that I have trouble getting over is when you see is our goal is 75%? Because it's just like school. It kind of, that's like a C. I don't want a C. I want an A or a B. So I don't know if that's something we're going to take in lumps, because I know some of these have moved up like 10%, you know, over the past couple of years, and that will get us up there. But when I see them, I kind of attribute letter grades to them, and I think that's kind of how a lot of people are going to think about some of those numbers. So one of my questions is, when we look at some of the employee satisfaction, was dealing with like people being treated fairly, or, you know, discipline, or people being rewarded, like those that do a good job didn't feel like they obviously were being rewarded. Do we have any more information from the survey, any, to kind of figure out more detailed and figure out how to structure a plan to solve that? Because I'm sure some places it's fine, and some places it might be isolate, you know?
So I'll take a stab at that, and Dr. Miller or Julie, certainly, one of the things that we're going to do is go out and gather additional information. However, what I would say to your letter grade is, we look at that, and we totally agree. You look at a score like a 63, and we're just not satisfied with that. And I think the benchmarks do offer some level of realism about where we're at, but we're not satisfied with that. So we are going to set those either long-range goals or goals that we think are appropriate and continue to push forward. With regard to identifying those areas, on Friday, you'll get all the detailed reports that are available, so you'll have another cut of data, which the directors are working with. So we know we have departments and areas within every department. I can look at HR, and I've already identified two to three areas on things that we're going to work on in HR. And I know every director is doing the same thing. As I mentioned, I've received a number of calls on, "Okay, let's get to what this is." There's a message behind the data. Employees are telling us something, and I think everybody is taking this. I think we're at a stage now with our third year, third iteration of the survey, where we're grasping that there's a message here, whatever it may be, and it's incumbent upon us as leaders to find out what that is. So through our open houses and through department directors working in their group meetings, we'll delve in further to get an understanding and to develop our plans around those things.
Where those are coming from and everything.
Yes.
Thank you.
Maybe I can make... Well, I was just going to respond to the notion of grades. We've heard that many times. We've heard that many times, both in terms of employee surveys and resident surveys and other surveys. And I totally understand where people come from when they think about that. And even though we don't think of it that way, I think, and let me explain why we don't. In school, you can get 100% right on a test of 20 to 100 questions even, something like that. With surveys of employees, you can't. It just doesn't happen. You can't get everybody giving the highest rating on everything. I think it's great to have, as a target, a meaningfully strong stretch from where you are to where you want to be. And I think that what the benchmarks do, in a sense, tell you just how steep is that slope going to be to get there. So, just with the example of dealing with employees of low performance. With 42% employees saying that you've done an excellent or good job, you're above the benchmark already. So if you want to get it to 75%, I'm not going to tell you, "Don't go for that." But, it would be remarkable to get to that. And it's okay to be remarkable, and I think it's great to have targets like that. But there is that range of, in a certain sense, downward pressure that you might feel, just in terms of how it's perceived in general. The other thing I want to say is that, even though there are 133 questions here, to get to your point about, are there clues, et cetera? I think, in a certain sense, this is like identifying the symptoms when you go to the doctor. To get the diagnosis of why these symptoms occur, that's where you have to have all the best minds around this table. I'll exclude myself from that, to help think about, why is it we're seeing what we're seeing? Because these results don't tell you why, they tell you what. And so, you have a very important and big next step. You've got the patients come in, and it's got, and the patient has all of these various characteristics, and now you have to decide, what is it that we need to do to make that patient better in those places where you feel that that's important?
Thank you. And I can see the trend lines going the right direction, it's just, so thank you.
Bill?
I just, I wanted to follow up on Sheri's one point with that, and I think, Dr. Miller, you hit on it. My generic question was, if you take, if we're using the benchmarks as our guide, in general, wouldn't you say that overall, public employees' just general satisfaction is perhaps lower than the average? Because of the various pressures that, you know, we're under as public servants with, you know, it's not like working for Google where everything's always, you know, rainbows and unicorns.
It's a great, it's a great question. I don't know the answer to it. I mean, I don't have good data to say, here's what the private sector employees think, here's what the public. I can tell you this, when we ask your employees, "Are you likely to want to be here next year?", 94% of them said they do. And I would say, in general, there are certain categories where public sector folks, to the extent that I know a little bit about it, are giving lower ratings to their compensation, to their benefits, and that versus the private sector. But there are other things about the work environment that is more positive. I don't know exactly where those things shake out, but I do think it varies depending on the category you're thinking about.
Okay.
If I could just add one point to that particular question, I think one good example of that is in an organization like local government, we have extremely low turnover compared to perhaps a Google or other private sector employers. But that also means the question, when we ask employees about opportunities for promotion, naturally, there's less opportunities for promotion because you're in a holding pattern because the turnover is so low. So some of that I do think is specific perhaps to local government.
He's got some additional. A whole bunch of other ones, so it's up to you.
Are you down, or you want to go?
No, I just will follow up on Sheri's. I've got a whole list of my own.
Okay, I'm going to go to Laura, she had indicated, next.
Thank you so much. As somebody with a human resources background who has worked in a public sector city in the area, I find these results to be actually very positive, and I don't look at them with a grade mindset. I find them to be really strong, and I also know that if you were to ask employees about morale, if you asked 50 employees what it would, either to define it or say what it would take, you would get 50 different answers. So, there's no, like on a test, there's no right or wrong on that. Employees have different communication needs, they have different needs that fit their morale, and I think there are some challenges in public sector. For example, the compensation, there aren't bonuses and things like that. As our city, I've noticed that a number of employees are coming from other cities to Goodyear, which speaks very highly of Goodyear as an employer. And also, I think that there are limitations in opportunities because of the growing, and communication is always going to be a challenge in an large organization, and the more we grow, the more that will be. And so, I think that when we address communication proactively at the executive level and the department level, it really will help a lot of those other things as well. Thank you. Great report.
Joe?
First of all, if my recollection is correct, we had money in there in this year's budget to do training for managers and supervisors, is that correct? So I'm hoping as we work those, as we get people through those programs, that maybe some of this dealing with low performers or dealing with that, I'm hoping will tend to go up, because that may be how communication works between expectations of the employee, clear and direct direction on what you expect out of them. So I'm hoping when those classes get through on some of those, that will go up. I was pleased to hear that you also have an action plan that's going to, you know, hit each department, because each department may be different, you know, for areas that you may want to work on, and that you're going to come up with an action plan individually for each one of those. So I appreciate that. I like the fact that it's going in the right direction there, but I understand benchmarks. But from my perspective, when you're 50, 55 and below, and I appreciate us having a 75, even though that may not quite be attainable, but again, I'd like to see us above 50s and the 40s in that area as we start to move forward. And as you move and look at the details of your actual departments, that we can get there. I know you've heard me talk before about turnover, and I know some turnover is good. We've gone from double digits now, what, high single? So that may be part of it. And I think it was Julia mentioned, people leave jobs for their bosses, not necessarily their job. So, we want to make sure that the right environment is there from a manager and supervisors as you work through all these. And I would like to see, you know, equal across the board. And I agree with Laura, you get 50 different answers if you ask 50 people what they think is high morale or whatever. But I'm hoping we can get some of these 50s and 40s up to that fact, especially the equal and the low performers, to make sure everybody, high, low, medium, are all treated the same throughout the organization. So again, I appreciate the thoroughness of the report, I appreciate the fact you're going to move forward with follow-up program to address those issues, and I appreciate we are moving in the right direction. But like anything else, there's always room, there's improvement, like you mentioned. So, again, thank you for the presentation.
Wally?
I have a three-part question, Lyman. How many employees do we have, actually?
603.
603.
Those are authorized positions.
Okay.
At the time we took this.
603. Okay, so how many took the survey?
547.
That's an extraordinary amount, to think that many employees took the time to fill out a questionnaire. We can't even get that return when we do a citywide survey, when we're asking them, you know, "What do you like about Goodyear?" We get wonderful positive back, but we don't get almost 100% to reply back to us. So that's extraordinary. Wow. Okay, that's all I wanted to ask. It was a three-part, but you answered it with just two questions, so that's good. Thank you.
I will say that there was a lot of activity around getting that kind of response rate. So everything from communications to making it fun, some videos, some, a lot of communication, and letting everybody know what our stated goal was. Our stated goal is 100%.
Oh, wonderful.
So we made that very clear at every level that we could.
That's wonderful.
Brandon, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think the turnout was very good, so, a hard time, last employer or other employers have been, they have a hard time getting the same numbers from voluntary surveys. So, yeah, definitely good. And, I mean, I think this is a very important survey. I mean, everything that our citizens see and touch is all in direct correlation to a city employee doing their job well, and, you know, all the interactions, and just, yeah, everything that they experience as a city is directly correlated to our team here and all the good work that they do. So, yeah, definitely, I'm glad we're doing this, and I'm glad to see a positive trend going forward. It's definitely good. And then to work on trying to sustain it and move forward. But, yeah, looking at the, I know you went over some of your corrective actions and how you're going to move forward with those. And, yeah, just looking at the top ones, it looks like some of them are tied. Looks like the five out of the, was it, one, two, three, four? Four out of the five are all, like they're all grouped into a, I'm not sure how specifically how we deal with performance review, performance, paid for performance, or discipline. So they're all, they're all within a, in the same type of element. So, almost 80/20 Pareto principle, but it seems like, yeah, it's all within, yeah, that same, that same area, how we deal with our employees in that way, so. But I know you said you're working on it, and you're looking towards what you're going to do with that. But, yeah, overall, I think it's great. I think it's great to have such positive feedback from our employees, and that we're definitely moving in the right direction, it seems like, so. So no real questions, just, I have a comment about the, how we do our performance reviews for our employees, if we do it every six months or every year, or both, or maybe we need to up that, or what it looks like to be able to deal with that, so. All right, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just echo, we agree that there's a performance management message there that's coming through on those low scores, so.
Yeah.
Looks like an opportunity there.
Yeah.
Well, I want to thank you. I thought overall it was a good, I'm sorry. Bill, you have more. Excuse me. Bill, you have the floor.
Thanks. Okay, so, back to the workplace results document that you guys sent out. Is there, I noticed in the recommend working for the city page, which is page seven of that document, what was unclear to me is that almost 38% of the employees appear to be unsure about recommending the city as an employer. And it may just be in the wording between likely or not likely versus highly likely, because that number is pretty high, but when you ask the morale question later, it's very, very high at 90, you know, 90-plus percent. So is there, is there any, from a survey perspective, Dr. Miller, is there, is that just a?
A disconnect?
Yeah.
There, one of the things that we've learned over the years is that if you're looking for parallelism in these findings, you don't usually get it. That said, and I could be wrong about this council member's dip, but I think the morale question was about 63%, not 90%.
Oh, okay.
So, but, that, so that doesn't, that seems to correlate a bit more with what we're looking at here. And as, what we're looking at is very unlikely, or somewhat unlikely, it's 10% of folks would not, you know, be sure that they would recommend working for the city to others. It's not zero. And who knows why that might be the case? That may have nothing at all to do with how they're treated or how the organization runs. It may, but we don't know. So, you know, if the target is to get that down to zero, and I heard nobody say that, but if one wanted to do that, it would be hard to do that, because these kinds of ratings that we see here are very positive, and you would expect some number of folks not to be interested in recommending employment to others, for whatever reason.
That was just more, I guess, gee whiz, but it just seemed to be almost a standout when compared to the, everything else that's very positive in there. That was just a little, that was a little weird in my brain. Secondly was, slide 15 on the presentation, are the list of the low, the five or six low, low scoring, I guess?
Mm-hmm.
And, Lyman, you were showing a, your, the plan?
Yes.
And it addressed most of it, because these have been low previously. So your goal sheet had been, you know, we're going to continue to work on these, which I think is, you know, right online. You'd also made a comment that you were going to see whether we were going to continue those or add different ones. If we haven't hit any of our goals that we've established, I would hate for us to just say, "Well, we're not going to hit them and move on to something new," that we're still going to, you know, keep up with these. So that was, was that, maybe I just read more into that.
Without having gone through the process, I didn't want to commit to anything. However, that has been our practice and the outcome over the last two years that we have continued to push forward with those, knowing that we hadn't hit that long-term goal that we had established. So, I would assume that that same thinking might be there.
Might move forward. Okay, so, the final question is, in the, the plan to move forward to try to uncover, if you will, some of the challenges that the employees are having, you talked about a number of strategies, employee roadshows, and DCMs going out and whatnot. But I would, I think, over our recent history, the challenge perhaps from the employees has more been a trust issue, and that if they're unwilling to talk about it in a survey, they're probably very clearly going to be unwilling to talk about it face-to-face. So, I would hope that we're looking at a strategy that might not involve something as formal, that perhaps employee-led focus groups, that they run themselves, that they, now those can conceivably turn into a, pardon the French, but a bitch session, but they can be productive, because then you can collectively put all that together and get that information moved forward to the senior leadership, which, in my last point, they clearly have an increased respect and trust in. The page three of that Trends Over Time report shows the, an increase in executive leadership from the employees. It was in the 60s, and now it's in the 75%. I mean, that's a really good, that's a big move from the last survey to this survey. I think it shows us the value of bringing in a new manager, especially from outside the city. This might be the time to strike with a, an anonymous employee-led kind of event, because they have trust now in the leadership, and then move forward with that. So, I think the, the survey results, for me, were very positive, you know, I think coupled with the decrease in employee turnover from double digits to single digits, I mean, that's a step in the right direction. The survey results are another step in the right direction. It tells us that the actions that we're taking as a council, investing, you know, positively in the benefits of our employees, and making sure we're providing them with the tools and the places and the equipment to do their job, that that's all paying off. So now we need to turn to the leadership and say, "Now it's your job to pick up the rest," to go from there. So I appreciate that. I applaud all the directors for moving this forward, and look forward to the work plan going forward. Thanks.
Yes, go ahead, Julie. I'd like to add one comment, is that what we have now that we did not have the last few cycles is the People Master Plan Committee, which is our employee engagement committee, which we look forward to activating also as part of this process. So, I think that we do have the structure in place to do exactly, to your point, to gather that information. So, I believe this is not the beginning of a conversation, because we've been having the conversation since 2014, but certainly another chapter in the conversation as we move forward. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Just out of curiosity, you know, when you do these, everybody's in a different mood. They've had something happen the day before, something with their job, been great with the boss up to one point, says something and it turns you off, or you thought you were going to get that promotion, didn't get it, you were almost 100% you were going to get, didn't get it. So how much, what percentage do you put in this? Because when you ask the general questions, I suppose the directors, when they're working with the employees that are on when they're working with the employees they're under, they can be more direct on questions so that the employee gets a specific answer to something that's really been either ticking them off, or they've been wanting to have, or anything. So these are all just kind of, you know, kind of pie in the sky type of thing. And so when I look at our percentages, I think it's considering the economy, considering two working people and most of the families, considering the debt load they have, considering everything that involves with that person coming to work. I think they're great scores. It doesn't mean I don't think we should always set goals and move forward on them. But I think sometimes we forget, at least this is my big thing in life, is that different generations take responsibility on their shoulders for their actions and what they do as performance. Other generations do not. So we have a combination of people here at Goodyear from different generations. And they do react differently. They do take in information differently. So overall, I think it's a great job. And I think it puts, really, a little bit more responsibility on the directors. And we don't have enough jobs to promote everybody that's doing a great job, because people are staying in the city. And you know, it's like, well, I hope they'll move out. I don't want that job, you know? So that's, that's government frustration, too. So, thank you very much.
Happy to be here.
Anything else?
I would just say one last thing for me. I don't mean to end the meeting, but just from my perspective, I think not only are the scores, the ratings by your employees remarkably strong and stable, but I think it's uncommon to have such strong support from elected officials for staff. I often see across the country, there be a conflict between those two groups. Not always, and not severe, but you, you often have different perspectives from the elected officials than, than the staff members. Or the staff members are trying to implement something, and you get new elected officials, and they have a different perspective. In any case, long story short, I think what you've talked about in terms of your interest in making sure that the benefits are what they need to be, your interest in knowing what these results are, and asking staff to keep the, the results strong, it's just not typical, and I think in a very positive way.
That's a compliment, council. Thank you very much. Well, it does take good city manager and great directors and good employees. It's all a combination. And when that doesn't happen, council doesn't look very good. Okay? So we all benefit from each other's behavior and how well we do. So thanks a lot. Anything else on this? All right, you know, we are not going to start the meeting until 6 o'clock. So free time to mix with the people in the audience and chat, and get to know everybody again, and find out what their holidays are. This meeting is adjourned.